Good morning. I almost said good morning. But my friend Max Burr, or, sorry. The Senator from the 23rd reminded me that it's afternoon. The time for convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order at this time. I'd ask that all unauthorized persons exit our beautiful chamber. It's my distinct honor to recognize the well-rested, well-dressed, well-prepared Rules Chairman.
Mr. President, it is a beautiful afternoon here in our state Capitol, and the men and women here are ready to fight for the people they represent. Mr. President, the Journal's been read and found to be completely correct.
I'm still used to the facts and figures that you normally enlighten this great chamber with. I'm encouraging you to maybe get back to doing that for the remainder of the special session, but that's just the words of encouragement. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The Chair hears none, the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please introduce them to the Secretary at this time. Mr. Secretary, will you please read reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. SB 1 EX, due pass by substitute, respectfully submitted, Senator Kennedy of the 18th District Chair. That completes the order, Mr. President. Mr. Secretary, pursuant to Rule 2-1.6, I hereby give notice that I will introduce a minority report to be read along with the majority report of Senate Bill 1 EX, signed by Senator Butler, the 55th District Chair. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read bills and resolutions for the second time?
Senate Bill 1 EX by Senator Kennedy of the 18th and others, the Georgia Senate Redistricting Act of 2021, en act. That completes the order.
Now time for our morning roll call. The Chair would like to recognize the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we dispense with the morning, or the afternoon roll call.
Without objection, we will dispense with the afternoon roll call. If I could have everyone's attention for a moment, I want to take a moment to reflect on one of our former colleagues who unfortunately passed away last week, Senator Tollison. I served in the House when he served in the Senate for a brief period of time and had a limited opportunity to work around him, but his reputation certainly was bigger than life with so many opportunities to serve this great state into his district. He was elected to serve Georgia's 18th Senate District in 2002 and retired in 2015. And I think one of the big takeaways was, obviously, I like to start on time, but he also liked to get here early. And I think so many folks recognize how hard he worked before most of us maybe even got up out of bed. So I would like to ask that we all rise and offer a moment of silence for Senator Tollison and his family. Thank you. You may take your seats. It's now time for a morning devotional, and I'd ask that all Senators take your seats, and I'd ask that the doorkeepers please secure the chamber at this time. It's my honor to recognize the Rules Chairman to lead us in our pledge of allegiance today and to introduce to us our Chaplain of the Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you join me in honoring our country, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Here for God's sake.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad to see you this beautiful afternoon. This is a real pleasure for me. I'm going to tell you about my friend's bio, then I'm going to tell you some personal stuff, and y'all are not to tell him any personal stuff about me. Joel Harrison, born in Milledgeville, Georgia, graduated from North Fulton High School, Florida State. Oh, it's better than the other one. And, let's see, where am I? Let's see. Worked at Grace Baptist Church in Lexington, Kentucky, First Baptist Church in Chickamauga, Georgia, Scott Belfour Baptist Church, Atlanta Baptist Association, he's the executive director. He helped birth new churches and revived declining churches, assisted African-American, Asian, and Hispanic Anglo churches, find churches to meet and make them greater churches. Pastured and served as interim pastor and pastor, chairman of Metro Baptist Association Leaders, married to George Anne, and they have two beautiful children and three beautiful grandchildren. At Florida State, he served as a track and field coach, that's where he and I got close together, and has taught, wait a minute. But when I was a young high school, young man, a teenager, Joel Harrison was our youth director, or youth pastor at First Baptist Church in Chickamauga. Well, we, for the first time, went to a place called Ridgecrest Baptist Camp in North Carolina, close to Asheville and Billy Graham's house. And Joel led me to find Christ as my Savior. And we haven't seen each other in thirty-something years. But we talked recently, and I asked him to come and lead us to our devotion today, and there's no finer fella that helped mold me into the man I am today. Sorry about that, Joel. So please, give your attention to Joel Harrison.
Well, I'm glad that somebody else has big words down here, too, where they can read them. So one of the things I've learned as I have gotten old is that the glasses, one day might be this way, and another day something else, especially when you deal with some of the illnesses that happen to it. I was told I had an hour and a half, so I'm not going to go that long. I'm going to keep it to five minutes, if that's okay with y'all. Georgia is very special to me, the state of Georgia. I've lived in it for many years. Lived in it up until I was seven years old, when we left Milledgeville. Then came back when I was a junior in high school to Atlanta, then left and went to Florida State, as he said. Then got up into Kentucky, I won't talk about that. And then came back to Georgia, and there was Jeff. Good guy, real good guy. Enjoyed working with him, enjoyed having the time with him. But one of the things that through the years, as I said, I love Georgia. You are Senators. You're important. And I believe that. I believe that you are important. Whether you say anything or don't say anything, I believe that you are important. You shape the next ten to fifteen years, the state of Georgia. You are change-makers. You are people who work together. And you work together for the good of this state. I've been in ministry most of my life. I've never played around with politics, but I have known some good Democrats, some good Republicans, some good independents, some good this, some good that, some good that. And the interesting thing that I found out was this. You do a great job in the state of Georgia. Sure, you have the squabbles. That's part of life, isn't it? Sure, you smile at somebody, and that person doesn't smile back to you. But those things come together for making Georgia our state, and I'm going to say, my home. My home, where I live. We need you. Our state needs you. And I want to thank you for being a Senator, being elected, and for the work that you do. Because you are leaders. Will you pray with me? God of justice and God of mercy, we ask for your Spirit of grace to guide us as we consider all matters that impact the individual and the collective lives of the people in the state of Georgia. Through the ages, ministers have called us to be caring and hospitable. Through the ages, ministers have called us to love our neighbor as ourselves and to embrace aliens and strangers as friends and fellow travelers. As we gather in this session, help us not to rush to seat to the seat of honor, but to take the lower position that we might not forget the grace that goes before us and the shared needs that unite all of us. As we do business on behalf of neighbors near to us, neighbors unknown to us, help us to slow to anger and swift to do mercy that we might care for others as we care for our own selves. Guide our hearts and minds that our work for the people better prepare a future for our peaceable kingdom. Guide our hearts and minds that we may be known not for quarrels that divide us, but for vision that unites us. Guide our hearts and minds that we may be known not by political parties that box us in, but for the celerity that sustains us. This is our prayer in the name of the One whose presence is great enough to fill the vastness of the star-filled heavens, and yet personal enough to stir the smallest of human hearts to love mercy and do justice. Alpha and Omega, beginning and end. Bend to us, your will, we pray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise this afternoon to talk about my good friend and your good friend, Senator Ross Tollison, who passed away Friday morning after an extended illness. Ross was a great American. That's what he'd always tell me, "Walker, you're a great American." And he was a great American. He loved this Senate body more than anybody I've ever known. He worked awfully hard. He served for thirteen years in the Senate, and he really, I think, spent 100% of his time working for his constituents in the state of Georgia. He loved Georgia. He loved the United States of America, and he loved people. And people loved him. Ross married his high school sweetheart, Sally Funk Tollison. They were married forty-two years, and she was an outstanding teammate of Ross's. And she was a loving and dedicated wife and caretaker of his these last few years. He's got three fine children, Trib, who is in ag education, his wife Brittany, Ansley, and her husband Nicholas Zakal, and Kelly. And my heart goes out to them. I know they're grieving today. He's survived by two sisters, Jill and Mary. Jill's married to Greg Leonard, and his other sister, Mary Tollison McKenzie. Ross grew up working in the lumber mill, and I think that's probably where he Ross grew up working in the lumber mill, and I think that's probably where he developed his early hours and habit of getting to work early and his real strong work ethic. My first memory of Ross, I went to the same independent school that he went to. It was a new school when he was there. He played on the first football team the school had, and I was a little boy. And I remember the adults talking about what a hard hitter Ross Tolleson was on the football field. And Ross was not a big person. My dad still says to this day that, pound for pound, Ross was the hardest-hitting football player he's ever seen. So he was tough. He was hard-working. He was loyal. He was a great family man. He and his father started and ran Tolleson Supply Company, which was a building supply company in Perry for years. Later on, Ross and my grandfather and my father and some others chartered a bank in Perry, Crossroads Bank. And then Ross later became a financial advisor, which he did through the rest of his career. Ross loved people, and you all know and that knew him, know what a... He always had a smile on his face and a friendly demeanor, and just being around him would make you feel better and lift your spirits. And he would often tell you to tighten up. We had a Ross Tolleson Day back in February of 16, and we had "Tighten Up" t-shirts printed up, and Ross came with his family, and that was a special day. Ross is in a... As sad as we are, and we'll miss him, and, you know, I shared office... We had an office complex, and we were in the same office building. I spent a lot of time with him. We'd love to go to breakfast at the New Perry Hotel. He was very supportive of me when he resigned in 2015 of my running for his seat and was a good advisor and help to me getting where I am today. And as sad as we are, I know he's in a better place because he knew the Lord Jesus as his Savior. And I know he's in heaven today, and I want to think he's either in a trout stream fly-fishing or in a pine field hunting quail or either just greeting people at a restaurant in Middle Georgia and introducing himself because that's what he loved to do, is be around people. But I hope you will join me in keeping the Tolleson family in our prayers as they go through this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for those great personal words of reflection on a great individual. Chair recognizes the Rules Chairman for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Ms. President, and thank you, Senator from the 20th, for your words about Ross Tolleson. I had the pleasure of serving with Ross. When I first came in 2001, I think Ross came in the next term. And he was an early kind of guy. Personally, I know it's a surprise to you, I am not an early kind of guy. But he and John Bullock and even then-Senator Brian Kemp and a few others, they'd be there. I'm talking like 6 o'clock in the morning, early, drinking coffee, talking about their day. And he liked to tell people, when he saw them next, he said, "Well, I'm glad you made it in by lunch." So one time, Ross sat back there about where the senator from the 36th sat, and we piled a bunch of hamburgers there about this high to make sure we knew that he knew we were here before lunch. And he really enjoyed that. But Ross was indeed a wonderful man, a wonderful person, and he worked harder probably than any of us do, and we all work hard in our districts, but he was an amazing person. But I had the privilege of knowing him and Sally and some of his family. And if I know Ross right now, he's looking down at us, and he's having a grin, and he's enjoying himself, and we wish his family the very best. And if I was to say, "Ross, I love you. We miss you, but tighten up up there." Thank you, Ms. President.
Chair recognizes the Pro Tem for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge and thank the senator from the 20th and the senator from the 53rd for their comments about Ross Tolleson. As I came to the Senate in 2010, I ran in an open election, and so I was assigned committees during that summer prior to us coming into session in 2011. And one of my first chairperson, first chairperson I met, was Ross Tolleson. And I thought to myself, if everybody's wired as high-strung as this guy is, I'm in real trouble. Because if you had a meeting at 7 o'clock... I mean, he'd schedule a meeting at 7 o'clock in the morning in the middle of summer. When nobody had any reason to do anything other than be here at 7 o'clock. And if you walked into the quarter till 7, he'd say, "Early's on time, and on time's late." He had an incredible work ethic. He had an infectious sense of humor. He had an engagement for all his colleagues. He had a devout love and a devout dedication for his wife Sally and his children. And he loved the state of Georgia. And he would always say, when he's going to retire, he'd say, "I'm going to retire. I'm going to move to Wyoming, and I'm going to trout fish all day, and I'm going to be the greeter at Walmart at night." I'd say, "Ross, when are you going to sleep?" He'd say, "I'll sleep when I'm dead." But he'd always tell you to tighten up. That was his phrase, as some folks here have a phrase, the great American and others. But he was dedicated to his constituency, and he was dedicated to his community, and he was dedicated to his family. And ladies and gentlemen, we speak of individuals. Isn't it great to know someone in their professional sense? You know them as a farmer, or a doctor, or a lawyer, or CPA, or a small business person, but you also know them as a husband, as a father, as a member of their community. And that's when we really understand the passion that people have for our community and for each other. Mr. President, I yield the whip. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 32nd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you guys know, I have the honor of being the chair of the Veterans Military and Homeland Security Committee in the Senate. And I know it's not Veterans Day yet, but I did want to point out that the governor and the Department of Veteran Services hosted a wonderful ceremony this morning honoring our people who have served in the military, and our own Senator Ed Harbison was one of the speakers. So I wanted to take this moment and just remember to thank all the veterans that are in our chamber. We can't pay you back. Over the weekend, I went to two Veterans of Ensign Cobb, and one of them was celebrating women veterans, and that's what this lapel pin is all about. We heard from speakers, women from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Desert Storm, Iraq, and Afghanistan. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the men and women who have served. Thank you. I yield the whip.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the senator from the 56th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to echo the great comments from the senator from the 20th and others about our former colleague Ross Tolleson. I was honored to serve with Ross for several years. And I'd like to share a story that hopefully his family and his friends back home would enjoy too. And I'm one of the early folks here at the Capitol usually in the mornings. And for many, many years, no matter what time I showed up here, Ross was already there. And I'd go over and have a cup of coffee with him, and he'd tell me all about the things he had done that weekend and his family and what he had planned for the week ahead. I remember one morning, though, that I literally woke up about 4:00 a.m. And I thought, you know, I'm just going to get a shower. I'm going to get there. I'm going to be Ross Tolleson at the Capitol this morning. And I shrilled in about 5:15 a.m., and don't you know, there was Ross standing with a cup of coffee saying, "Tighten up, Albers. I'm on second cup of coffee already." You just never could get one up on Ross, but he was such, such a good man. And I will tell you, after he retired, I remember walking in the Capitol that next session, that first day, and I flipped the lights on downstairs in the Capitol before anybody else was here. And it was a little bit of a sad moment for me, not having Ross already there ahead of me. To everyone here, and certainly again to his family and friends, Georgia's a better place because Ross Tolleson was in it. Godspeed, my friend. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 11th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too was lucky enough to have served several years with Senator Tolleson. And actually, I was elected in a special election, and the session was already underway. And I got here early in February, and a couple of nights before I was sworn in, a couple of senators came together to welcome me, and the senator from the 53rd, that's already disappeared, was one of those. And we had a great meal together. But what I remember about Ross, I walked into the restaurant not knowing anyone. I didn't know a soul. And there was a guy sitting at the bar. There may have been an adult beverage in front of me. I don't remember that part very well. But there was a crowd of people around him, and they were just laughing and talking and having the best time. So I finally found the folks that invited me to dinner, and there was a chair missing, and they said... I said, "Who else is coming?" And they said, "Senator Tolleson." And I said, "Well, who is he?" He said, "He's that guy sitting at the bar surrounded, and we're going to have to go just tell him to come on because he will never shut up if you don't." And as I got to know him once I was sworn in, he truly was a gentleman. I didn't know him, as the senator from the 20th did, as far as his family and his background, but he truly was a Southern gentleman. He always had a smile on his face. And if you had a problem in an area that he was an expert, he always gave you the time to help you to figure it out. And one thing I do want to mention is dementia Alzheimer's is just a terrible, terrible disease. And he met that head-on with dignity, and he and his family, you know, did what all families have to do when they're going through that. And that's just get up every day and do the best they can in just an awful situation. My wife chairs the local Alzheimer's Association in our county, and she is dedicated to raising funds for that disease that even now has... There's no medical treatment for it. And I just want you guys to, while you're thinking about the loss that we all suffer, also consider the millions of other people that are going through that same devastating disease and do what you can, whether that's writing a check or participating locally with these folks that are trying to find the cure for Alzheimer's. Senator Tolleson, you'll always be in my memories. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the whip.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 8th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Ms. President. I promised to make this quick, but this morning, we had a ceremony for Veterans Day. And it got to me, I wanted to tell you guys a story about our pop. It's Kara's grandfather, my wife's grandfather. He's 99 years old. He just went into Baptist Village last year. Pop was in the Combat Engineers in World War II. And during the Battle of the Bulge, he was doing reconnaissance mission at night in a boat. Germans shot up a flare. They machine-gunned his raft. The two soldiers that were with him were killed. He was tied to the boat, floated down the river, was able to grab a hold of a limb, and he was able to get a knife and cut the strap out, and he crawled up on the side of that riverbank. And for five days, he laid on that riverbank with nothing to eat and only drank river water, covered himself with leaves and mud because, you know, it was a very fluid situation. While he was there, now Pop, he can't... He's still living. He can't tell you what he had for lunch, but he can tell this story like it happened yesterday. The fifth day, he was spotted by a German sniper, and the first round went over his left shoulder. The second round went right through his hair. And he prayed. He said, "Russ, I prayed for God. If you would please let me live and make it home, I promise you I'll live my life for you." And he says, "You know, Russ, there was never a third shot." He said, "You know, it don't take but two shots aside and a rifle." That same day, he was captured by the Germans. He was carried in this little old cabin. And Pop tells the story, there were two regular German officers there and one SS officer. Pop said, "He had the skull and crossbones on his lapel." He said, "He asked me, you know, what I knew, and all I told him was name, rank, and serial number." He said, "Because that's all I knew to tell them to start with." But the guy said, "He said, 'I can tell from the way you talk.'" The SS officer did. He said, "You're from the southern part of the United States." He said, "I figured, Russ," he said, "he must have been educated in the United States." But the German officer said, "What do you want us to do with him?" And the SS officer said, "I don't care. Throw him out in the alley and shoot him." Keep in mind, he hadn't eaten anything in five days. He couldn't walk. He's in this alley. Pop says these two German soldiers come by. Pop said they couldn't have been a day over 14. So one of them was holding a basket of green apples. So he reached his hand up like that, and he said, "The little German soldier gave him a green apple." He said, "Russ," he said, "I've never ate an apple that good again in my life." But he was taken to a prison hospital where he celebrated Christmas 1944. He was watching out the pane glass window as the Allies bombed the town of Aachen, Germany. A German officer came in there that Christmas day and gave him a Lucky Strike cigarette. And Pop says, "I was the first one closest to the door." He said, "I got two cigarettes. Everybody else didn't get but one." He said, "Son, you try to make two cigarettes last as long as you can. I'd take two puffs and put it out, you know." But he was transferred to Stalag 11B POW camp where he stayed for six months. And all they would have was a little bit of rutabaga or something like that and a broth of water. And when he was finally liberated, six months later, he was carrying 123 pounds on his six-foot-three frame. And when they got them all, about to get... It was the British liberated them, and they got them all to this camp. They all brought them a bunch of food, and those guys were so starved that a couple of them just dropped dead. And they came in there and took their food away from them. But as I was talking to the senator from the 15th, my dad served in Vietnam at the same time he was there. I just think it's good that we reflect on the fact of what all our veterans have done to keep us free. We reflect on the fact that we have real enemies in this world. And keep in mind that if you're Republican in this chamber, there's a lot of Democrats have died for your freedom. And if you're a Democrat, there's a lot of Republicans have died for your freedom. And we have that freedom because of the veterans of this country, and I thank God for them. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the whip.
Thank you, Senator, for that great perspective. You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? The chair hears none. Is there objection to adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair hears none, and the resolutions on the consent calendar are adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? It's a quiet crowd. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, 9 November 2021 pursuant to House Resolution 2 EX.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read your announcements?
The Rules Committee will meet upon adjournment in 4:50 at the Capitol. Finance Committee will meet in Mez 1 at 3:00. And the Senate Study Committee on Violence Against Healthcare Workers will meet in Room 310 CLOB at 4:00. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Does any other senator wish to make an announcement? Chair sees none. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Tuesday, November 9, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oppose? Oppose no? The ayes clearly have it, and the Senate will stand adjourned. The ayes clearly have it, and the Senate will stand adjourned.